I know. It was there also for nine years.
Well, thank you.
Let's bring the meeting to order, please. Jason will be the senior fire sergeant.
Fatherhead, we're heavenly Father, Lord. Thank you for watching over us and allowing everybody to travel here safely, Lord. Lord, please watch them on their way home. Lord, be with Billy Wayne and the several others that are sick, Lord. With sickness going around, just lay your hands on everybody and their families, Lord. Thank you for down on the cross for our sins. And please be with us as we conduct the city's business this evening, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. And we'll just go right in and get started with our meeting. Need a motion for the approval of the previous month's meeting.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And now we need to have another motion for approval to pay the bills for November.
I make a motion if they pay the bills that they do in November.
Second.
All in favor? The next order of business, the new business is a Christmas bonus that we have pretty much always gave the employees for their hard work during the year. And that would be the same amount as it was last year with the $500 per employee. So, any discussion on that?
I think it's more than.
Okay, we would need, we would need a motion to go ahead and do that, please.
I'll do.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The next order of business is the trash and the landfill policy that we have. And we have found out that we had usually done up until now, it was around $40. We would come and pick up a big, big bunch of your stuff and take it off up the landfill where we take it to, which is the place up there, close to Lakewood, has really went up on their charges on that per ton, up to $73.58 per ton. And that's before us even driving up there to do that. So, if we don't go up at least that much on it, probably just round it off to say 75 bucks, we're gonna be going in the hole quite a bit because all the, everything that's coming up with Christmas and a lot of stuff going on with it right now is gonna hit us for a pretty good lead. So, any, like, any discussion or anybody have any other ideas on that or any different amount than that that you think would be appropriate?
I think that's fair enough for if they put out large items, right? Yeah.
Yeah. I could do that. Big, big water, water stuff. So, we would.
So, that, is that per ton?
Per ton. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Per ton.
I think we'd base the charges originally on ton, half ton. I may ask, but times have changed.
That'd be good. Anybody else, any other discussion or thoughts on that? If you want to do that for the $75, we would need a motion to do so.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay. The next order of business would be the big Christmas float like we had kinda last year for the Christmas parade. And we have some things left over from what we did last year, but we would need around $250, I believe, pretty much max for going ahead and fixing that and having us float in the parade also. So, any discussion or any feelings anybody has about, about doing that?
It's a good idea.
Okay, we would need a motion to do so.
I make a motion if we approve doing the float, the additional $250.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the next order of business, we talked to some of the employees down at, at the C Hall, Old City Hall in the post office. The windows, some of those are getting kinda shaken. They need to be resealed. And there is one that we're gonna have to look at, possibly. There's a slight crack in it about replacing those and that, that being our bid, our building. We need to get a couple of bids on that to check out what a professional person says we need to do about those buildings with it being commercial and that to bring it up to code and take care of it. Somebody don't lean up against one up and it falls out in the street there. So, I would, I would need a motion to check on getting that done and would come up with an amount the next meeting.
Why does the post office pay for the lease of the building? For that portion of the building?
I, I could not.
It's 1575 is what they pay my fee.
Excuse me?
1,0575.
So, that's about, what, 15,000 roughly a year? I don't know if that kind of roughly, round about, maybe a little more, a little less. So, I would need a motion to get someone to look at that and give us an estimate on fixing that.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the next one will be the renewal of the alcohol license for Bura Bura and Twisted Tomato. So, I believe we need to ask Michael about that and Denise may know some about that. Is that the only one that's coming up as of right now?
Yeah, the flame cake lady's not, then hers.
Okay.
Yeah, so, nothing's changed on Bura Bura or Twisted Tomato. As y'all know, Michael Galinsky owns both of those with McCaseville Rocks. He applied for the renewal license with Denise Quinn and completed that application process. She then turned it over to me. I reviewed it. Everything's still the same, no changes as far as the two restaurants go. So, I would ask the city to renew their license on a motion for Bura Bura and Twisted Tomato.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The next order of business is a new hire for the police department. Michael, I'll let you explain that.
So, we hired someone to replace Officer Perez at the previous council meeting. Y'all gave me the authority to hire someone new, myself, Commissioner Cocker, and the mayor sat down in an interview board and we wanted to bring on an officer named Kevin Terry. He's got 20 years' experience and we completed his interview board with other people and decided to hire him on a 90-day probation period. Since then, Steve Bennett, who works for us, he also works full-time for Union County Sheriff's Office. He got pretty much promotion on what he wants to do in his career with Union County. So, he's not gonna be able to help us like he has been full-time. So, he's worked two full-time jobs. I don't know how you can do that as a police officer, seven 12s, seven days a week, but he has for two winters now. So, still wants to be on part-time if needed. And so, that would be no issue, 'cause I don't think nobody can share his equipment. So, but, no, Steve's been a good officer, a good employee, and wanna keep him on part-time. And so, I'd just like to ask the council to give me the authority to look for hiring someone new to replace Steve. He's gonna be with us till January 1st. So, gives us some time to hire somebody replacing him.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The next thing is a new printer for Denise in the clerk's office. That one there is kinda got like, it'll work every once in a while. And I think it's been on the government shutdown most of the time. It just works every once in a while when it wants to. So, probably, I believe we talked about it some this afternoon. And it will just be a black and white printer that actually fits under, under her desk. So, it'll be a relatively cheaper printer. It's kinda the same. And they're, the printer at Tammy's, is it Tammy's? It's done the same thing, so they both decided to retire.
Yeah, so we replaced Tammy's and now mine is dying.
Okay, so it would be one similar to hers, correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And that, that one that we bought for Tammy that was approved by the council was $1,245. So, I'm assuming that one will be around that amount in the tape system. Well, I wouldn't say less. I thought we said more on that. So, we would need a motion to do so on that.
I make a motion and purchase the printer for the clerk's office.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, any opposition? All right, we will kinda move on to the, the old business, which we are still, you know, haven't decided fully on the L-MIG. Has anyone came up with anything else other than getting that street done and make sure we get the repair on Hill Crest up there where the stump has been removed? We are still waiting on them. They know Johnson had gotten a bid on that. And I believe Michael's talked to them a couple of times to remind them, but they probably have a trouble getting down the road from Lee Ridge to McCaseville, something like everybody else. So, that's kinda where we're at on that right now.
Are we still gonna use this one for the crosswalk down here, Mayor? Or is that the other L-MIG? I can't remember. 'Cause that guy's coming in the morning. I know we voted on doing that crosswalk. He's coming in the morning to possibly get that project started. He wanted to try to get it completed by.
Yeah, I hope we would wanna do this, but the L-MIG, that's the one. The other one is the potential date for the stump. I kinda put both of them together. That one had already been approved a couple of years ago. And we just finally got the tree down about six months ago. And now we're just waiting on them. But the L-MIG, yes, that would be the crosswalk and that other little street unless we come up with something else between now and December. So, next month, we'll have to pretty much decide if that's what we're gonna go on and make sure we have the funds out of the street to match that, which is like 30%. And I believe that L-MIG's $26,759, somewhere right around that amount, roughly. But yes, that's still part of that, that one will be on that. So, that's kinda where we are on those things, kinda up to date. Of course, we sent the papers back in for the lights when they redo the bridge. So, that's, that part of that's already done. Everything else has really got really quiet. I don't know, like, everybody's moved away from here except folks working on the water. But for us right now, I think quiet's pretty good. We haven't gotten any, I believe, any other bills that we, Denise, except for that one. And that was mostly on the Edworth project that was already done on that that they did before we knew it. So, the only thing, I have talked with Grant one time and I asked him flat out, you know, are we still looking at getting some of that money back? And he said, I said, I really like a yes or a no. You know, I didn't get that, but I didn't get a no. He said it's really being talked about by a lot of other people and finance people. So, we're still looking at that, but I'm just not letting them forget that that's what I believe that we all want as a, as the mayor and the city council. I think that would be our ultimate goal for them to finish that up and help us get back that amount of money, the kinda told Davy that we were gonna get. So, if I get anything else on that, I'll make sure that everybody knows. Y'all and everybody here, also, it's very important to us. That would get us really back in great financial shape, water plant-wise. Kinda on that, also, we had, we're gonna have to replace the heating unit out there. There never was really one put in. There was like a three-stack heater. And the air conditioner has kinda went by the wayside. I guess everyone's getting old like me. But, so, we're looking at, at that and the only price we got on that so far is a, one for the mini-split is about all we can put out there to make that work with the thickness of the building and the way it was constructed. That's pretty much the only, only avenue we got for that. And so, next month, I will give you the report and what we've got on that as far as if anyone else has applied. Of course, you know, we, if you saw in the paper and on our Facebook page, we've had a add-in there for additional worker out there. We had one leave. And so, we are kinda closing that out. We've got, I believe, within five applications. And it's been out like a month, a little bit over a month. So, we're gonna close that and then start looking at the applications. And unfortunately, we've not had one that has, could come in and hire in and just start working down there. We're gonna have to do the training again on that. So, as you will see in the, in your financial report, that's where some of the overtime is coming on, taking care of that. So, we've got to get that done pretty quick, too. So, hopefully by the first of the year, we can get someone started. And it takes like 80 hours of training, I believe. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, and then they're gonna take their tests and certifications.
Take their tests and certifications. So, you know, it takes a couple of, two to three months to get that done. So, we'd be looking at the earliest march to do that. The other thing is Denise's been working awful hard on it and Davy and Michael. Thank you both, all three, very much. We're getting a bunch of stuff already ready for the auditors to turn in to them Monday. They may be coming up here, I'm not 100% sure. Did you find out?
She responded back to us, yeah.
So, it may be a last-minute call I give to you Monday to come up and present what we have right now. Of course, Michael's got his report, Davy's almost got his done, which is all being on the computer now. So, the, out there's really cleaned up a whole lot and everything, getting really stacked up. We have very little left out here that we have to go through in this building. And if any of y'all go out that way, it's not pretty good to look at it because it's stacked up very nice and neat. The inside of the building's getting cleaner and cleaner. For this time of the year, that's really hard to do, parking your vehicles and stuff in there because of the mud, of course, with them digging. But I really want to thank all of y'all for getting all this information ready because they're really ready for it. And we have to have it all ready by December. So, the vast majority of it's already done. So, other than that, is any other council member have anything you'd like to bring up at all to talk about anything whatsoever? The only other thing I would, I would talk to you some about the decking out there at the park on the, the deck that goes out over the river. We're gonna have to do a little bit more repair. You have two ways to go on and off. The end closest to City Hall or closest to restroom areas there, which would be if you walked into it, the one on the left, the steps there are getting a pretty bad repair to the point where we're gonna have to fix it pretty quick to keep someone from the edge of it possibly breaking off and someone sliding, sliding down through there. So, I can have that ready for y'all also next week. I'll get a quote on that and bring that up in the new business next week and get that finished before everything really kinda breaks loose again for the summer period. Anyone else know anything else? The only other thing I believe that we have left, you know, we're gonna have to repair some of the posts, quite a few of the posts on the fence and on the walls that was installed several years ago. We talked about, a little bit about that at the last meeting. I know there's been some funds already appropriated for that. But I would like to go back and look at that to make sure that the quote we got recently is in line with what we thought we were gonna have to spend the next time. So, I'll get Denise to look through the minutes or some of y'all can look through and see what you have back, back to that so we can make sure that we're staying in line with what funds we have and taking care of business on that side. So, anyone else have anything else before we move on? Okay.
No.
I'm gonna tell y'all, I need to apologize to her. She drove up Tuesday night. We kinda got ahold of everybody except one. It was a very important part of our whole thing. So, that, that's on me. And, but I bet you it won't happen again. That's about all I can say about that. But that one there is on me. So, Ms. Denise, you have anything you need to, to bring up on that? Okay, Michael, you have anything else other than what you talked about previously?
Unfortunately, Mayor, I always have something. Our lot at McCaseville, as y'all know, is November the 28th, the day after Thanksgiving, that Friday. It'll start at dark. We're slowly getting the lights put out. We got the steel bridge completed. If you wanna look at it tonight, you can.
Looks good.
The concrete bridge will be done hopefully tomorrow. So, still some more things to do, but it's coming together. The Coannis, Copperhill Coannis Christmas Parade is December the 6th. That's a Saturday at 2:00. They'll start lining up down East Tennessee Avenue, probably 2:12 and 1:00. So, that's when y'all have to get in the float. So, on that day. Just a little update, Brantley Worley, he will be coming back in December. So, I'm glad to have him come back and everything goes this, the way it's going now, he should make a full recovery to come back to work. So, we're happy about that. Y'all notice some things start taking place at the city park. I know y'all approved to get that construction done for the bathrooms and stuff. I go in the morning to get the permit for that, through the land development, building permit, all that. Talked to Keith about that today. So, when we get a permit and get that started, they'll be removing that dirt, that little area beside the building that's in the middle to go ahead and start framing up for that bathroom on the outside. So, if you see anything going on at the park, wonder what it is, that's what it is. So, and like I said, the crosswalk that y'all approved to get that put in, he's coming in the morning to look at that and see what he needs to do. Shouldn't be much of a project. They're just gonna have to take part of the sidewalk on both sides and make it handicap accessible 'cause right now it's up on a curb. And we'll put, we've already got the flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs in place down there. So.
Any other signs ever?
No.
Didn't order that?
And they keep giving me the running around, but we've paid for the signs. So, I mean, you might have to go to Kentucky later.
I've been that way before, you know?
That's all I have. Another date that, and I'll give y'all an invitation, but December the 12th is gonna be our Christmas party for the police department. It'll be at 6:00, down back at Tooney's again this year. So, y'all can, please, try to come. I know a few of the officers are gonna get some. We'll try to keep this, since he's not here, he, he don't know it, but Brantley will be getting the Medal of Valor and the Purple Heart. So, and some members from the state capitol will be there as well, help present that. So, if y'all can, I'd love for y'all to come.
What time is it gonna be?
6:00.
Six?
Yeah.
The only other thing I have before we get to the public comments, I would like to thank each and every one here on the council on the support we got for the farmers market this year. It has, it turned out very successful. I wanna thank all the businesses that allowed us to be in and around them, especially you. We were in front of your place a lot and I greatly appreciate that you allowed us to do that and work with us on that. We have two other ones coming up, which will be, I believe it's December 29th and the 6th, which is the same day as the parade. So, the, those two days, the street will be closed off again. And so, that would end us up until, I'm thinking probably we'll start again Memorial Day. That seemed like a good, good time to start and worked, worked very well 'cause it was, we didn't get very little rain, not much cold, just a couple of windy days. But, as I said, I wanna thank everybody that helped get that involved. The city of Copperhill worked very hard on that. They did the vast majority of the work and the advertising from the chamber. I want to say all the businesses that really helped do that. I greatly appreciate it and I hope that you got some extra walk-in traffic and things from that. That was the intent, to give our community somewhere to go and some things to do, but also to help try to pull more people in, stay around town a little bit more and helping our merchants there in town. Because, you know, without you guys, we wouldn't have a lot of things going, going on in town. And I greatly appreciate all that. So with that, I will open it up to public comments if anyone has anything they need to bring up, anything at all. Yes, ma'am?
Do you want me to stand?
Whatever you would like to do.
My name is Julie Shira and I'm here representing the hospital, Blue Ridge Medical Center. I'm a twenty-three-year employee of the hospital and in 2023, our hospital was on the verge of closing because we were struggling financially. That's when Dava Foundation, a not-for-profit organization purchased our hospital. And when they purchased our hospital, they rebranded us as Blue Ridge Medical Center. In that rebranding, they also made us a not-for-profit hospital. And during that process, we became eligible for a program in 2025 called the Georgia Heart Program. This program is a dollar-for-dollar Georgia income tax credit program where individuals, married couples, and businesses can redirect their Georgia income taxes back to the hospital. So it's money that we're already paying. It allows all of us as community leaders and business owners and residents, tourists, to redirect their dollars back to the hospital and make a difference in our community. You see, if you live here or you visit here or you have a business here, truly you're a vested interest in our hospital. So you're a stakeholder at Blue Ridge Medical Center, even if you don't work at our hospital. And we need this hospital. Desperately, we need this hospital. And not only do we need it because it impacts our community, a thriving community is dependent upon access to health care. In fact, when you speak to a realtor, the main question that people will ask when they are looking at buying property here is, how are the schools? And is, are we gonna have access to health care? So yes, we are stakeholders, all of us here in this room and having a vested interest at Blue Ridge Medical Center. But in addition to that, when minutes count, we don't necessarily have time to travel forty-five to sixty minutes down the road. That's when we least expect to have a problem, car accident or an aneurysm, a heart attack, a stroke. And when minutes count, that's when you least expect to need Blue Ridge Medical Center. So I'm here to get council members, each and every one of you, to rally behind the hospital, help me to spread the word that everyone here in this area has an opportunity to make a difference in our hospital and our community. And so I'd like to pass out some information. And the way that you participate in the program is by going out to georgahart.org or you can click on this QR code at the bottom and register to redirect your Georgia income taxes back to Blue Ridge Medical Center to help our hospital. It is a dollar-for-dollar Georgia income tax credit program. And when you apply online, that application is processed by the Georgia Heart Organization and then sent to the Department of Revenue for them to further process that application and approve the application. The applicant then receives an email or a letter stating that you've been approved for a certain dollar amount. And now that there's a special extension, you have until December thirty-first to make that Georgia income tax payment. So the only caveat is, is this, if you've paid Georgia income taxes and those taxes aren't due until April fifteenth of 2026, if you're an individual or married couple or if you're a business, it's due March fifteenth of 2026. You're essentially making that tax payment either two and a half or three and a half months early. But you're making a difference because you're sending those tax dollars back to our hospital and helping us to provide services, helping us to recruit new physicians, helping us to get equipment, and helping us to renovate the facility. So we really appreciate your time and would really appreciate you all being a voice for Blue Ridge Medical Center and helping other people to recognize that they can make a difference in the community by redirecting their Georgia income taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, my dear. Thank you. Okay, anyone else have anything? Anything at all? Anyone here have anything else? Okay, need to make a motion, need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?